Order today is Monday, November 4th, 2019. We're here for the purpose of the regular meeting of the Elmhurst City Council. I'd ask that you all rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
(inaudible)
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Clerk Malone, please take your role.
Leader.
Here.
Gunn.
Here.
Bram.
Here.
Palmski.
Here.
York.
Here.
Toledo.
Here.
Park.
Here.
Levin.
Here.
Kennedy.
Here.
Conquest, absent. Brennan.
Here.
Mullenar.
Here.
Deuter.
Here.
Sabatino.
Here.
Thirteen, here, and one absent.
Uh, thirteen and ten, that's one absent, we have, Quorm. Before we, uh, jump to, uh, Agenda Item Three, I want to make an introduction to, um, one of the newest, um, Elmhurst employees. He's Ozzy, he's in the back of the room, I'm gonna ask Officer Capitelli to come on up and introduce Ozzy to all of us. Who's a good boy, look at this one.
Ozzy.
So Officer Capitelli, why don't you, um, have Ozzy stand at attention, or whatever Ozzy does? Tell us a little bit about Ozzy's training and how you work with them.
Basically, we were trained for, uh, I went out there to northern Michigan for four weeks. Um, before that, he was there for two months, and then prior to that, he was actually taught to go for a month and a half, and he was born in Germany, two years old. He's a dual-purpose dog, he's training narcotics, man tracking, criminal apprehension, gambling protection, things like that, and we also have that training twice a month.
And how long has he been with us?
He is, uh, he graduated on October 25th.
And he, he goes home with you, right?
Yes.
Fantastic, and he's got some big paws to fill. Any other questions for Ozzy or Officer Capitelli? Well, welcome aboard Ozzy, and thank you very much. A hand for Ozzy. Uh, okay, on to Agenda Item Three, 3.1, receipt of written communications from the public at this time. Is there anybody who has any written communications that they wish to submit to the clerk? If so, are they all going out to pet Ozzy? I want to go with them.
Mr. Mayor, can I suggest we keep Ozzy around for the budget discussion?
Absolutely. Um, so, Agenda Item 3.1, receipt of written communications from the public. If there's anybody in the audience who has any written communication they wish to submit, please raise your hand. Seeing none, we'll go on to public forum. Agenda Item 4.1, this is an opportunity for anybody in the audience to address the council on any item they so choose. Um, when your name is called, we ask you to make your way to the microphone over here to my right, your left. Please state your name as we are recording, um, out of respect for the work that we have to get done here this evening, and respect for other people that may want to speak, we ask that you keep your comments to three minutes. I will keep time, and if you run over your three minutes, I will, um, ask you to, uh, please wrap up your comments, I'll give you a gentle nudge. Uh, before I ask Clerk Malone to, uh, let us know who's, who's up, um, I should let people know that we're going through a, uh, audiovisual transition here at City Council, and specifically Council chambers. Um, we have audio tonight, we do not have video tonight, so we are audio recording, we are not video recording. That is not a requirement, by the way. Videotape, technically, by statute, um, we're required to take minutes of this meeting, and that's all. So, uh, we will have audio, we won't have video, we anticipate we'll have video at the next meeting. Uh, on with, uh, public forum. Clerk Malone, is anybody signed up for public forum?
Yes. James Colbert.
Good evening, my name's James Colbert, I live at 234 North Willow Road, and I have two subjects to talk about. Uh, the first one is, uh, the monthly department reports. They go back to about six years on, uh, on the website, and then in, uh, June, it drops from five departments reporting to one, and in July as well, one, and then they just stop. And I'm just curious, are they gonna start being put back up there, the monthly department reports? Which would be nice to see.
Um, this is just public forum, we'll take in whatever information you have, and staff will address it at a later time.
Okay, I've, I've actually contacted two council members on this subject, and they've contacted the city, and one of the responses will, will give them what they have, but there's nothing been posted.
Okay.
Since July. And my other subject is, uh, concerning, um, accounts payable to the International Association of Chiefs of Police, and, um, and I was in the news recently that Donald Trump was invited by this organization in Chicago to come speak, and I think that's, uh, and then, I don't know if we sent members of our, our employees, we paid for that or not, but I, I wouldn't want that to happen, because I think it reflects poorly to have the chiefs of police invite somebody that's under criminal investigation, and then who came, and then engaged in racial dog whistles while he was here. I think that reflects poorly on Elmhurst if we're using tax dollars to, uh, pay for that, and I would hope that we wouldn't send any money to that organization ever again. Thank you very much.
Joseph Farewell.
Could you, my name's Joseph Farewell from Verizon Wireless, I'm only on the list for the benefit of the council, should they have any questions regarding 6.7 and the consent agenda? Thank you.
Paul and Mari Sashna.
My name's Paul Fletcher at 285 Illinois Street. Good evening, Mayor and council members, we are here this evening seeking resolution in regards to our backyard flooding. We purchased our home in May of 1989, and greatly enjoyed having family parties and a place for our children to play. The flooding started in 1999 when the city allowed McKenna builders to build a new house at 277 Illinois, two doors south of our home. This is, was the lowest lot on the block, and since the city allowed the builder to build up the lot, the flooding in our, in our lot started. We immediately contacted the city to see our frustration, but fell on deaf ears. The city then paved the alley, basically putting asphalt over the stone with no engineering involved. The backyard started flooding even more, that we had to sit out again and show them a video of how the rainwater in the alley pitched right into our backyard. This also fell on deaf ears. Since then, uh, new, new homes have been built along Illinois in the, in the, in the alley, we continue to get more and more water. After numerous flooding events, we finally got city engineer Eric Johnson to come out in the spring of 2017. He assured us after multiple days of flooding, we were first on the list in the spring of 2018, what we thought was to be put in place drains in our backyard, which could connect us to the storm sewer. We started calling the city in the spring of 2018, and discovered Eric Johnson was no longer employed by the city, and Ken Johnson was a new city engineer. We repeatedly attempted to contact him to no avail. After not hearing from Ken Johnson, we contacted James Grabowski, and, and the meeting was scheduled right away. Ken said the city would not connect us to the storm sewer, but offered to place a drywall in our backyard. We continue to flood, and it's a hassle every time we have an event to place the pump, extend 150 feet of hose out to the street with each flooding event. The water is creeping closer to our foundation, which is a concern. The water in the backyard on Sunday, October 26th, was over a foot deep. We are concerned with the liability of a child drowning, falling in the pit, and the risk of electrocution. We have been in contact with Danny Polanski for the last six months, but feel we must get, this must be addressed immediately. Another home south on our block is going to be torn down. And a new one built. We did not purchase our home to be a retention pound for the city, but want to enjoy our backyard like the rest of our neighbors, please help. Then I have pictures from the last flooding event, if you'd be interested in seeing them.
Want to hand those in? That's fine.
Yeah.
You can give them to Bob, Bob will hand them down. Thank you, Alderman Dunn.
Well, we're just wondering, what's the next step on, you know, we've, we've tried for years now to try to get some help, so just wondering what the next step will be.
Okay, staff will get in contact with you this week.
Okay, perfect.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, that's it for public forum, for those who signed up. Is there anyone in the audience who didn't have an opportunity to sign up on our sign-in sheet, uh, before the meeting, but wishes to address council at this time? If so, please raise your hand. Seeing none, that concludes public forum for the evening. Public, I'm sorry, announcements, any announcements from the dais? Alderman Deuter, you have an announcement. I can sense it.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Um, I'd like to invite folks to come to our board meeting that Alderman Sabatino and I are hosting, it is going to be held on November 20th at 7:00 here at City Hall, um, the conference room's right at the top of the steps on the second floor. Thank you.
Any other announcements? Seeing none, we'll go on to, uh, consent agenda. At this time, is there anything on the consent agenda, any item, any Alderman wishes to vote no, or provide further comment? Alderman Bram.
6.6.
6.6. 6.6, anyone else? Okay, and I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda minus item 6.6. entertain a motion, motion by Alderman York, second by Alderman Mullenar. Before I ask for the vote, um, City Manager, do you have to, uh, provide details on 6.10?
Yes, I would. Uh, item 6.10 is an ordinance authorizing the purchase of real property located in Elmhurst. His property's common address is 994 Riverside Drive in Elmhurst. Uh, it is a residential lot, uh, the city is, has a contract to purchase that for $320,000, and, uh, closing shall be on or before December 12th of 2019.
Okay. Um, you have a motion to approve consent agenda, um, as listed minus Agenda Item 6.6. I got that motion, so, uh, Clerk Malone, please call a roll.
Leader.
Or vote, sorry.
Aye.
Gunn.
Aye.
Bram.
Aye.
Palmski.
Aye.
York.
Aye.
Toledo.
Aye.
Park.
Aye.
Levin.
Aye.
Kennedy.
Aye.
Conquest, absent. Brennan.
Aye.
Mullenar.
Aye.
Deuter.
Aye.
Sabatino.
Aye.
Thirteen ayes, one absent.
Thirteen ayes, zero nays, motion carries, agenda, uh, consent agenda minus item 6.6 is, uh, approved. On to item 6.6, this is a report out of Public Works. Clerk Malone, please read the recommendation.
It is therefore the recommendation of the Public Works and Building Committee that the city enter into an intergovernmental agreement between the county of Cook, the Illinois State Tollway Authority, and the city of Elmhurst for the improvement to the county line road and a new southbound I-294 ramp, and the city attorney be authorized to prepare necessary documents for city council approval. Signed, Jim Kennedy, Chair, Marty Deuter, Vice Chair, Alderman Mike Brennan, unsigned, Mark Sabatino.
Okay, to put this before council, I ask for motion to approve the report, um, and recommendation as read. Motion by Alderman Kennedy, second by Alderman Deuter, Alderman Kennedy, your report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I'll defer to Alderman Bram, who pulled this report.
Alderman Bram, you pulled this report, you have questioned our comments.
Yes, thank you. Um, excuse me. The biggest thing here is not only, I guess, how we came up with the allocation of responsibility and thus cost, but also making sure that part of this project, we have what I'll sincerely call a flyover to, what is that, eastbound North Avenue, um, from county line road, which has been discussed many a times as part of this project, I did not see it stated in the report nor the IGA, so I wanted to make sure that this is a part of it before moving forward with any approval of shared costs.
Alderman Kennedy, or, or is yours?
Kim, do you want to, go ahead.
Uh, if I can ask for just a little clarification, uh, you just want to make sure that they're building that ramp that exits southbound county line road to eastbound Lake Street North Avenue.
Correct.
Yes, that, so that is part of the overall project, yes, that is moving forward. Um, this IGA is addressing only the exit ramp off of 294 right now, and the, um, the traffic signals, because they're new traffic signals, and how jurisdiction will be parsed over those.
I guess my follow-up would be, when do we get an opportunity to make sure that the conversation of having that ramp turns into reality? To me, this is probably the last opportunity to ensure that, um, that flyover happens, and that would prevent, or at least help mitigate, traffic in the neighborhoods to the west. So if it's not in this report, when are we gonna see it as in writing, and in an agreement in an IGA with the appropriate government bodies?
City Manager.
Thank you. Um, so, uh, they, the Tollways engineers have been sending us plans, uh, for that portion of it, that we've been commenting on stormwater issues, um, the design, and so that is absolutely moving forward, uh, no question about it. Without that portion of the project, the exit ramp from 294 onto county line road doesn't make any sense. So that absolutely is moving forward. Uh, if you'd like to come in, we're happy to share the plans with you anytime that, um, we can meet.
Thank you, I'll, I'll take you up on that offline. I, I guess I have reservation, because here, we're moving forward with a part of the project, and I don't see anything in writing of the other piece, which I think is essential to Elmhurst residents in this area, to at least mitigate, um, 294 traffic from going into the residential area. Those are my concerns.
Okay. Any other comments? Clerk Malone, please call the vote.
Leader.
Aye.
Gunn.
Aye.
Bram.
Aye.
Palmski.
Aye.
York.
Aye.
Toledo.
Aye.
Park.
Aye.
Levin.
Aye.
Kennedy.
Aye.
Conquest, absent. Brennan.
Aye.
Mullenar.
Aye.
Deuter.
Aye.
Sabatino.
Aye.
Thirteen ayes, zero nays, and one absent.
Thirteen ayes, zero nays, Agenda Item 6.6, uh, is approved. On to committee reports. Agenda Item 7.1, this is a report out of Finance. I'd ask Clerk Malone to read the recommendation.
It is therefore the recommendation of the Finance, Council Affairs, and Administrative Services Committee that the city participate in a measurable cost-sharing program related to the special increased physical services program of the CBD as prescribed above and proposed by the city and Elmhurst City Center staff. Signed Noel Toledo, Chair Kevin York, Vice Chair, and Alderman Park. Unsigned Alderman Bram.
Okay, to put this before council, I ask for a motion to approve the report, and recommendation as read. Motion by Alderman Toledo, second by Alderman York. Alderman Toledo, your report.
Thank you. Um, first off, I wanted to point out to the public and to the council that, um, the recommended action, which is listed under the Agenda Item Details, was updated today. There was an error, and the, um, it was updated to match the actual recommended action that was in the report, which has been correct the whole time. Um, I just wanted to point that out. Um, so, the report in front of us is essentially bringing forward a proposal, a recommendation from the committee, to have a more predictable and measurable way to, um, develop a budget for how much the city is willing to contribute to help provide the physical services in Elmhurst City Center. Those physical services include snow and ice removal, they include the landscaping, the holiday and tree lights, and grounds maintenance. And the chart that's in the report details the method that was used to determine the measurable way that we would participate in a budgeting process, to contribute. And the reason for, for, for doing this is, first off, we've all agreed over the past couple of years, the majority of the council has approved funding to help that area after SSA VII went away. Um, I think that the, given that, that the council has agreed that continuity of service for those properties that are not participating and not contributing tax revenue to SSA VI, those should also receive those services as a, a level of continuity for our downtown, um, and for our residents, and for customers who come to town and shop, and enjoy the wonderful business district that we've created. So, um, we're asking for your support, I can go into more specifics, um, it's a very detailed report, lengthy, potentially a little, um, history lesson on the history of the SSAs, um, but happy to answer any questions, and I ask for your support. Thank you.
Comments or questions?
Uh, thank you, Your Honor. Um, so, I'd just like to say, uh, thanks to, um, city staff, I know, um, Tom Trossin and Mike Kopp, um, worked especially hard on this. This is something that, um, I'm certainly thankful to the committee and Chair Toledo for getting this thing across the finish line, uh, in having a report that we have here tonight. Um, as Chairman Toledo mentioned, it's been something that we've all supported over the past couple of years, but it is measurable, um, this year, which is really, really good. So, I think we're good, I'd just like to say that if you don't support this report, um, you know, you would be acknowledging that there are gaps that exist, um, in the service areas, and you would basically be asking for somebody who taxes themselves to be providing services for, um, residential properties and/or, um, city-owned properties. So, I think it's a, kind of a no-brainer from that respect, but I did want to bring that to everybody's attention.
Okay, any other comments? Alderman Bram.
Thank you. Um, I think the, the formula that, uh, City Center, Towne-Pirvila, as well as staff came up with is a good one. It's definitely an improvement upon the amount that we designated in past years, which I believe has been $75,000 in, in at least the past year. Um, this comes up with a formula where it would fluctuate depending on what is actually spent versus, uh, just a flat fee. So I, I like the idea, I like the concept moving, or moving in that direction. Here's what I don't agree with. What I don't agree with is that SSA number seven, number seven, number six, I don't know, six. Um, the residential SSA hasn't been, number six, hasn't been renewed in multiple years, four or five years now. The residential properties in this area would therefore be getting benefits that they're not paying for, but the commercial or retail properties are by, as I believe Alderman Toledo said, taxing themselves. If this was just the first year, I would say, this is great, we're making headway, we're doing a formula, great concept, let's go down that direction. But we haven't explored, or re-explored, doing a residential or an overlay SSA in multiple years now, four or five years now. So to me, I think it's just too soon to pull a trigger on something that I believe could just become the norm moving forward, before we explore different alternatives, and one of those is that overlay district. Um, we have been paying City Center for different services, I think we call them special services, physical services in the past. Again, the formula's great, I just think it's not the right time, we need to explore the residential SSA, um, to see if City Center can pay for all these services on their own accord before coming to the city of Elmhurst. So I do not agree with Alderman York's statements on what his perception is, if you don't support it, um, I just think that this is one step too soon, so I do not support it.
Okay, any other comments? Clerk Malone, please call the vote.
Leader.
Aye.
Gunn.
Aye.
Bram.
No.
Palmski.
Aye.
York.
Aye.
Toledo.
Aye.
Park.
Aye.
Levin.
Aye.
Kennedy.
Aye.
Conquest, absent. Brennan.
Aye.
Mullenar.
Aye.
Deuter.
Aye.
Sabatino.
Aye.
I have 12 ayes, one nay, and one absent.
12 ayes, one nay, motion carries, Agenda Item 7.1 is approved. Reports and recommendations, Agenda Item 8, 8.1, Mayor Morley. Only one thing on my, uh, report tonight, um, it's, uh, budget season, um, we are required by law to, uh, approve a budget every year, so, um, we will be holding, uh, committee of the whole meetings after our council meetings for the next several meetings, um, and, uh, hopefully we'll get through our budget, because we have to approve one by the end of the year. And that starts tonight, after this meeting. City Manager, your report.
Thank you, I have a few, um, items. First is, uh, council recalls, we did an electronics recycling event, and we collected, this is a real number, 21,248 pounds of electronics, uh, through that, uh, 100 cars came through, and a lot of those were TVs, uh, which people had to pay to dispose of, but the good news is, people brought quite a few electronics to properly dispose of versus throwing them in a landfill. And then, secondly, over the weekend, we hosted a pumpkin collection, and we had the York High School Eco Club volunteer with that, uh, Bob Blouse is the teacher that, uh, staffs that, and we had 118 cars come through there. Uh, we don't have a weight on how much, no, no poundage yet, but we will, uh, but still 118 cars, uh, I think would be, is very successful, they were very pleased with the results. Uh, everybody knows or recognizes, last week, we had the pre-winter storm that came through, uh, which surprised quite a few, and took down quite a few branches and leaves. Um, because of that, we're having a special, uh, branch pickup, which we announced was today and tomorrow, and that's with Republic Services, who are going around and collecting bundles of branches that are properly cut and, uh, tied together, in addition to our city crews who are going around with the chipper to get the bigger branches, so they'll be going, uh, around all week doing that. And then this week is, coincidentally, also our first of the free leaf pickups, so that's Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, with your usual garbage day. Um, earlier tonight, we had, uh, from 4 to 7, uh, we hosted the Bike and Pedestrian Plan Open House. Uh, it was a good turnout, as I walked out of the office space, uh, saw quite a few people coming to give their, um, input on the revised and updated Bike and Pedestrian Plan. And the last item I have is, the November 11th meetings are postponed to the 12th for Veterans Day, so those will be Tuesday, and on that Monday, City Hall will be closed, we'll be having an in-service training day for all the staff.
Um, one thing I did forget is, uh, still, we are still, uh, taking applications to fill the clerk role, um, as I mentioned last time, that's, uh, my duty to appoint with advice and consent from council, we are taking applications through the 11th of this month, month, which is next Monday. Any other reports from elected officials? Alderman Mullenar.
Just an add-on for November 11th, just to remind everyone, the veterans, we'll be doing a veteran ceremony at the memorial in Wilder Park on, on November 11th in the morning.
Okay, anyone else? Seeing no one else, move on to nine-point, uh, resolutions, number nine, 9.1, I'd ask, uh, Clerk Malone to read the resolution.
A resolution approving and authorizing the execution of a change order number two, final for the change order number two, final for the Artrium Lift Station Improvements Project.
Okay, to put this for council, I ask for a motion to approve the resolution as read. Motion by Alderman Kennedy, second by Alderman Deuter. Any discussion? Any discussion? Clerk Malone, please call the vote.
Leader.
Aye.
Dunn.
Aye.
Bram.
Aye.
Palmsky.
Aye.
York.
Aye.
Toledo.
Aye.
Park.
Aye.
Levin.
Aye.
Kennedy.
Aye.
Conquest, absent. Brennan.
Aye.
Mulliner.
Aye.
Deuter.
Aye.
Sabatino.
Aye.
Thirteen ayes, zero nays, and one absent.
13 ayes, zero nays. Motion carries. Agenda Item 9.1 is approved. On to other business. Any other business? We shall entertain a motion to adjourn. Motion by Alderman York, second by Alderman Mulliner. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We're adjourned. We're going to take five minutes to set up the room and then we're going to gavel back in with committee of the whole. Thank you.